Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the San Carlos City Council and Successor Agency Redevelopment Special Meeting. Today is Saturday, February 21st, and we are going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As is our custom, we're going to start with any public comment for items that are not on today's agenda. Each speaker is limited to two minutes. If there are more than five individuals, and I'm not sure there are since I only have one speaker card and none for the public comment, you can talk about anything except what's on today's agenda, which is one item, and if you want to talk about that item, then, once we get to that, then you're free to come up. And it looks like we don't have any public comment. Would anybody like to talk on something that's not on today's agenda before we get started? Okay, seeing none. We'll move into what is really a study session, and a study session is really just a meeting where we want to hear from the public. We have a possible revenue measure that may be on some future ballot. We don't know when. It could be this fall, it could be next year, it could be at some point later. But this is a process that has grown out of our strategic plan and study sessions we've had. We have had community forums so far, online forums, presentations to various groups, and this is a process that's going to take a while. I don't think any of us up here have any particular opinions on which way we think we ought to go. What we really want to find out is what the community thinks is important to you. And so our job today is to listen to you and note your ideas, and then move forward. We're going to have another one of these meetings this coming Wednesday. We have a regular meeting Monday night, which is a normal agenda, and then Wednesday will be a second one of these special meetings where we will be listening to the public again. So with that, I'd like to have, maybe Jeff Maltby, you can take us through this process today and how it will unfold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning, City Council and members of the public. Thank you so much for giving up a Saturday morning to come listen and talk with your local leaders. This morning, I'm going to make a few introductory comments about the process, and then we're going to have Stephanie Anderson from Community Focus come up and talk about the three community forums that were held last month with residents, followed by myself again, talking about the results of the Shape San Carlos Online Forum that we did and a small forum that we did with the San Carlos Rotary Club. They'd asked us to come talk to them about Shape San Carlos and this process that we've been going through. After that, we're going to hear from Brian Godby of Godby Research, who conducted the scientific survey of the community, and then we'll have just a few summary comments by myself before we turn it over to the council for questions and any discussion that you'd like to have, and then we'd like to, we're hoping to accomplish all that within about an hour this morning so that we've got at least an hour at the end to hear from residents. So with that, the process, as the council's well aware, and I'm sure the public can imagine, we often, city council, city staff, come in contact with our residents, and over the last couple of years, we've heard more and more from residents about things that they would like to have in the community, and those things are very wide-ranging, from what you might consider to be rather bread-and-butter infrastructure projects, dealing with sidewalks and street conditions and potholes and those kinds of things, to traffic improvements on Holly Street or in the Terolinda-Carlmont High School area, park improvements throughout the community, recreational facilities such as community centers or swimming pools or those types of things. In about the last year, a property called the Black Mountain Property off of the Alameda has come onto the market, a privately-owned property, and a number of folks in the community have suggested it might make a nice park, so we've heard from folks on that. So there was a very wide range of issues, and when we looked at it at the staff level and just tried to put some very loose numbers to it, we pretty quickly concluded that to do all those things would be in the neighborhood of $400 million or so, which would be well beyond the city's means to pay for those projects in a short period of time, and quite frankly, really beyond the community's means, even through a bond measure to raise that kind of money. So it becomes important to try to understand what the community's priorities are on all these various wants and desires within our community. And as such, the council discussed this at their last strategic plan, gave staff direction to go forward in outreach and engagement process to do that. Last year, sort of as part of the same sort of thinking, engaging the public and getting feedback from the public, the council put in place a tool that we call Shape San Carlos, which is an online forum tool that allows the city to put up various topics, then the public can go online and register and comment on them, and it's really designed so that it's not a dialogue, like, you know, sort of a back-and-forth that you see on some of the social media-type forums like Nextdoor, Facebook, where arguments can erupt about things and that sort of thing. It's really an opportunity for residents to go on one time, post their comments, and then the city collects them and passes it on to city staff, management leadership, and the elected leaders of the community to help sort of flush out their thought process when they're making decisions on things. So we utilized that tool. We also wanted to have a robust process to actually meet face-to-face and have our community members meet face-to-face, so we hosted some community meetings with the public that you'll hear about in just a few minutes, to have them sit down together, and really more, you know, they got to listen to me for about 20 minutes, which I'm sure bored them out of their minds, and then they had the opportunity to spend the rest of the time talking with their fellow community members about these, you know, 10 or 14, depending on how you divide them up, projects, and providing all their feedback, which has been included in the rather robust set of documents that you've gotten so far. And the idea here is that we're moving, you know, ever slower, we're adding layers of information on top of layers of information to help make the community's desires more clear to everybody. In a small city like San Carlos with, you know, just 28,000 residents, it still can be a very difficult process to really understand community desire and intent on projects, and especially when you add the additional layer of the possibility of asking the community to pay for those projects at some point. So we want to make sure that if we ever get to the point where the council is voting to put a bond measure on the ballot, that it's for the project or projects that the community most desire, and that the price tag is within a range that the community would be willing to pay. And if not, if none of those things happen, then the city would just continue to move forward with our existing business and our existing capital improvement project schedule that we've adopted for the next five years. So with that overview, we're sort of imagining that we get through these two community forum meetings this week, today's and the one on Wednesday, and then on March 9th, we'll come back to the city council with an item on their regularly-scheduled agenda meeting to discuss the results of all the information that you've heard, the information that we've received at these two meetings this week, any additional thoughts that the council might have, and then talk about next steps, whether or not we can narrow this very wide field of projects down to maybe just a couple at most, so that we can then go back and have some more meetings with the community, but on a more focused set of potential projects so that we can actually do a little bit deeper dive on them. Black Mountain, I think, really lends itself to understanding that process. We've talked about Black Mountain in a very general way in terms of being a park, but we haven't really had the time or opportunity to dive down deep with the community and understand what, if we were going to buy it to be a park, what kind of park would they like it to be? And so that would be, we'd probably want to spend a couple of months doing that. If the council ultimately decides that they want to move forward with a bond measure this coming November, that decision-making point would be in the mid-July to early-August timeframe to make that particular ballot. So between now and then, we're going to be doing as much outreach as we can on whatever the topics that the community and the council would like us to continue to explore and have dialogue on. With that, I'd like to introduce Stephanie Anderson to come up to the podium and tell us a little bit about the results from the Shape San Carlos Community Forums. These were the live meetings that were held at the ACC and the library.
Thank you, Jeff. Good morning, mayor and city council members. I'm Stephanie Anderson with Community Focus. We are a nonprofit organization, helping government agencies and cities engage more effectively with the residents and the communities they serve. I'm going to provide a very brief overview of the Shape San Carlos Community Forums. As Jeff mentioned, the city has put in place a number of processes to gather community input. In September 2014, the city of San Carlos introduced Shape San Carlos, an online community engagement tool, to increase transparency and encourage the community to participate more regularly in civic governance. Topics were introduced on Shape San Carlos to gather community input on a number of project and program ideas. In addition to the online engagement tool, the city hosted three Shape San Carlos Community Forums in January 2015. These forums allowed residents to participate in shaping their city and to have meaningful discussion with their neighbors and city staff about a variety of potential projects. The focus of the community forums was to really gather more qualitative input. It was important to reach out to a variety of organizations, to invite people to attend the community forums. We reached out to clubs, organizations, service clubs, foundations, associations, the real estate community. Laura Toishel coordinated this effort, and we developed an invitation and an Eventbrite forum for collecting the RSVPs. Laura sent the invitation to dozens of groups, made phone calls, excuse me, and made announcements at meetings. Brian Carey managed the social media promoting the forums on Facebook, Twitter, and on Nextdoor. The three community forums were held on different days and times to accommodate residents' schedules, and the forums had an average attendance of 35 community members at each. At each of the community forums, city manager Jeff Maltby provided an overview of the history of the city's revenue flow and current budget limitations, and provided brief descriptions and estimated costs of 14 potential projects that had been suggested and discussed. Community members had the opportunity to discuss these potential projects with each other and to provide written comments and workbooks. Additional ideas for other projects that were not already on the list were also collected. All of this information is included in the report, which is available online. Every comment and additional idea that was generated is collected there. The attendees had the opportunity to talk with each other about the 14 potential projects, sharing what was important to them, and learning from each other. Each attendee was given a workbook and asked to answer a few questions about each project, highlighting what was compelling, what their concerns were, and also ranking their top three priority projects. Again, all of those comments are included in the report. There are 55 pages of comments, if you'd like to read them. It was clear that the residents who took the time to attend the community forums care very deeply about the city. We heard a lot of strong opinions, enthusiasm, and even passion, both for and against various potential project ideas. The community forums provided valuable qualitative input. That is, we heard a lot of, again, strong opinions, both in support and concerns about some of these ideas, and also we got a lot of input that would help inform the next steps of the community engagement process. The forum attendees were asked to identify which projects they felt were, quote, "urgently needed" to improve the quality of life in San Carlos. They also identified projects that they felt were not needed to improve the quality of life in the city, and attendees were asked to rank their top three priorities. It was interesting to see that in some cases, people indicated that a project would improve the quality of life in San Carlos, even if they themselves did not rank it as a priority. They saw it as having value to the city. There was a lot of energy around the Black Mountain Property and the community shuttle in particular. There was also quite a lot of interest in creating a dog park, so more detailed information is provided in the report. And you can see from this chart, there are a lot of colored bars there, but you can see from the ranking, the purple is where residents ranked this as something as urgently needed to improve the quality of life in San Carlos, and the first priority, some of these colors are a little hard to discern on this chart, but Black Mountain Property was kind of a clear leader there, as was the restarting the Scoot Shuttle was also a popular idea. So I have been asked to keep my comments to under five minutes, and I think I've probably come pretty close to that, so any additional questions can be taken later. Thank you.
Do we have any other people going to present?
Yes, we're going to continue on. Can I have the clicker? Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, so we're going to take a quick look at the online community forum results, as well as the Rotary Club forum that we did. We had about 10 potential projects and programs listed on the Shape San Carlos website. The city received 316 respondents. We had about 1,200 visits to the site and 316 responses. The responses, there's an algorithm in the system that delineates how much time people spent providing their feedback, so that amount of feedback, if it were put into verbal testimony here today, would represent about 26 hours of testimony from the public. There's quite a bit of detailed attachments from Shape San Carlos that are in your packet, but we'll just sort of go over at a high level the results. Here are the topics that were listed. In general, Black Mountain Property was by far the most supported topic in the online forum, with over 96% of respondents, almost 97%, supporting the purchase of the Black Mountain Property, and of those, over 80% willing to support some sort of bond measure to purchase the property. Recreational facilities and dog parks were the next tier of support in the online forums. Recreational facilities received about 80%, dog parks, I think, was about 86%. Recreational facilities, however, can encompass a very broad swath of potential facilities, and when you divide those up, it broke out as about 44% supporting additional lighting on existing athletic fields, 19% supporting an aquatic center, 17% supporting more outdoor field space, and 15% on other and some other minor categories. Utility undergrounding, about half the respondents felt that utility undergrounding ought to be a priority. New sidewalks in the community, as the council's aware, there are some areas where the city never built sidewalks or required developers to build sidewalks when housing developments were put in. About half the respondents, less than half the respondents, felt that this should be a priority, though 57% felt the city should make it a priority. So there's a little bit of a mixed message there. In terms of shuttles, a majority of residents agreed that a citywide shuttle service would be valuable in San Carlos. About, I think, 87, 88% of respondents indicated that they don't currently use public transportation to get around within San Carlos. However, only 7.1% indicated a willingness to pay for any sort of tax measure related to funding a shuttle service, so that was actually one of the very wide disparities that we saw online. Downtown parking generated a very mixed result in this particular survey tool, with residents being asked a number of questions and responses varying widely on views on parking issues and the best ways to address them. So rather than getting into all those details today, the information's in the packet to take a greater look at. When we talked about traffic and traffic-related problems and asked folks to identify what they felt were the largest traffic-related problems in the city, Holly Street corridor was identified as the top issue that most residents felt on the online forum ought to be addressed, as well as other areas throughout the city of varying degrees. And a majority of respondents stated that they had noticed a minor improvement on the Holly Street corridor since September, when the street was restriped and re-signed. Community gardens, we talked about. A majority of respondents would like to see a community garden with a focus on youth and educational gardening, with the most popular location being north of the youth center, sort of the side yard area there. Here, you can see the results, and these are just favorable ratings. Now you can see the same set of categories, it drops down, but they maintain their position, so the recreational facilities, actually, the recreational facilities and the dog parks, I think, changed position, but they're virtually, those remain virtually unchanged. Black Mountain drops down about 15% when you ask people whether or not they want to pay for it, but it's still a very strong favorable rating in the Shape San Carlos forum. So the least support, again, for funding was citywide shuttles and street trees and sidewalks. Folks felt like, well, they'd love the city to take it over if they had to pay to do so, not a real priority. The Rotary meetings and summaries, we had 17 folks participate through the Rotary Club meeting. The highest priorities that were identified at those meetings, and they were very condensed versions of the larger forums that we had done, were Holly Street corridor improvements, street improvements in general, and street tree and sidewalk maintenance by the city of San Carlos. So that forum generated a very different result than we saw in the other tools that we had looked at. And with that, I would like to introduce Brian Godby to come up and spend some time walking us through the poll that Godby conducted.
There you go. Thank you, Jeff. Members of the council, my name is Brian Godby with Godby Research from San Mateo, and happy to be here this morning to go through the data from the quantitative survey. So jumping into this, of course, the objectives we've talked about already, to look at various opinions about the city services, facilities, and financial management, to look at potential bond measure, as we've been discussing, and really to look at a variety of city priorities for this list that the process had identified and was carried forward into the survey. There's, of course, a variety of demographic information, which we won't go into today, but our detailed report will have that, including literally hundreds of pages of cross-tabulations. The methodology for this survey was actually an internet and telephone hybrid interview. The universes were, if you can think of these as concentric circles, the largest was the November 2016 universe, within that is the June 16 universe, and then within that is the smallest of the universes, which really we're going to focus on today, which is the November 15 universe. That's the one that is obviously the next most immediate election opportunity for you should you decide at the end of this process to move forward with some sort of revenue measure. And the demographics of each of those universes changes. For example, seniors make up 15% of your population. They make up 40% of the likely November 15 universe. So there's a dramatic difference there, and there are other differences as well, but age is one of the primary ones. The survey was in the field in late January and February. We start with the internet portion until we exhaust that, and then we go back, and since this is still a voter sample and it's a clustered sample, we know which groups, which segments did not participate for the internet, until we go back and we spend our phone resources going after those segments to make sure that the sample is representative. The average telephone survey was 20 minutes long. We don't know how long it took people to take it on the internet. The number of completes was 692. 580 of those came from the internet, and then 112 from the phone interviewing. That phone interviewing was almost exclusively in the November 15 universe because we were looking for, again, to fill in our clusters, and the people that, as you might expect, tend to underrepresent in an internet survey are the older folks, and that's just the way it works. Then you can see the breakdown of the number of completed interviews in each of the concentric circles, with the largest being November 16 and the smallest being November 15, but all of the November 15 completes are within the November 16 universe. And then finally, the margin of error rate runs from 3.6% for the November 16 down to 4.6% for the 15 universe, and you can round that to 4% and 5% respectively. Any questions about methodology, because that's always an important thing? Okay, I'll move on, then. The first set of questions is what we call a climate. It has nothing to do with the weather, but it's about what people think about the city of San Carlos. First one is their opinion on the job you're doing to provide services. The way we ask this is we say, do you have a favorable or unfavorable opinion? We then subsegment that into very and somewhat, and you can see those numbers here. It is correct to aggregate the numbers on the favorable and unfavorable side, so we've got 86% in round numbers favorable, which is a great place to be, and 9% unfavorable, with just 5% unsure. The unsure number is actually pretty low, given other communities that we've done this in, so it's important to note that. Usually, that can range into the 20s fairly easily, but here, people have a pretty good handle on what they think you're doing to provide services. The other thing that we look at here, and it's an important takeaway, is the ratio between the favorable and unfavorable, in which you have a 9.3 to 1. That's a great place to be, and since the purpose of this overall project is to talk about a potential revenue measure, it's useful to compare that with other successful revenue measures, and in fact, the lowest rating we've seen there is a 2 to 1 ratio, where we've been successful. So you're way ahead of that, so your job performance is great, and that helps you. The next question, same sort of format, but instead of services, we're talking about the job you're doing to provide facilities. I won't look at the individual responses, but to note that the 84% favorable to 10% in round numbers is an 8.7 to 1 ratio. Again, that's great. There's a fairly low not sure here as well. And the third question that we asked in this section was about financial management and managing taxpayer dollars. Here, we almost always see the not sure go up, which it did here. It's still lower than we see in other areas, but people just don't have as much information about that typically, so it's not surprising that it goes up, but again, it's still lower. People are better informed among this universe than we've seen at other communities. On a similar question, that gives us a 3.6 to 1 ratio, which is very good, and again, using that, you know, where did we see the lowest ranking on this vis-à-vis a successful revenue measure? I've seen this as low as .9 to 1, so actually, an inverse relationship. So you're well ahead of that, so that's a good thing. At that point, we switched gears and went into the list of various features and those things that were on Jeff's list of $400 million worth of projects. Each of these was asked in a random order, so there's no position bias. The order you see here is related to the responses, not to how we asked them, and the randomization obviously gets rid of the position bias that we see. The way we analyze this is we look at the margin of error that we talked about, which was 5% for the November 15 universe, which is what this represents, and so we look for tiers. And so we look for tiers to be greater than the margin of error. But the margin of error is not just 5%. In reality, it's plus or minus 5% for any item. So one item could be 5% lower and another item could, or higher, and another item could be 5% lower. So we really look for a 10% differential for it to be a statistically significant difference. And that, excuse me, that helps us define these tiers that you see here. So the top tier was fixing streets and repairing potholes. If you add up the green and the blue boxes, that's 79%, and that's obviously a strong number. In the second tier, we range from purchasing undeveloped Black Mountain property down to making improvements with the Holly Street corridor. I might also add, these are abbreviated in order to fit on the slides. Some of them were a little longer. That includes also parking and undergrounding and the shuttle program as well. They range from, if again, adding the green and the blue boxes from 63% down to 53%. Again, that 10% range I mentioned. And then the final tier is updating and improving community centers at 50% down to adding a dog park at 31%. And I'm certainly cognizant of the difference in these rankings than what you saw in some of the qualitative things. While we did an internet survey in your Shape San Carlos tool, as an internet, remember that our internet survey is focused to be representative of the voter populations. It's not people who are interested in an issue going to a website. So that's the difference between quantitative and qualitative. And while I'm a dog owner, I think the difference between the two of those explains the difference in the support for things like dog parks, our interest in dog parks. Of course, this is another data point for the council to consider. The next set of questions was asked in the same methodological framework. We randomized all of these, so there's no position bias. We then asked a slightly different question out of this supporting statement, and because people, we identified it as a supporting statement, wouldn't think it would make them less likely to support a measure if it was a piece of information they heard. So the response categories are slightly different. You'll see there's only the much more likely, somewhat more likely, no effect, and not sure. We don't have the negative side of the equation because it just doesn't make sense to people when they're taking a survey either online or on the phone. The tiers, however, are created the same way with that 10% range. So in the top tier, we have all of the funds must stay in San Carlos, no money for administrator salaries, Holly Street eases traffic congestion, on down to undergrounding wires makes our neighborhood safer. That range is from 72% in round numbers, more likely, down to 61%. The second tier includes purchasing Black Mountain will prevent it from being developed at 60%, and that ranges down to now is the right time to invest in San Carlos at 52%. So again, that's that 10% range from a statistical perspective. All of these tiers essentially are tied from a statistical perspective. There are numeric differences in the order, and that's always important because when you're talking about things, you have to have an order. You can't just say, oh, well, it's all the same. You've got to start with one. So the numeric differences, while not statistically significant, are useful. And then in our final tier, we have businesses and homeowners will pay their fair share. That's 49%. It ranges down to 38% for the last item on the list. Because we did our positive statements, supporting statements, we also do opposition statements because we want to look at both sides of the coin. Methodology is the same here. We don't put a minus sign in front of these numbers to make them seem bad because they're opposition statements, so the higher it is, the more impact it has against a potential measure. In the top tier, we have hurt seniors and those on fixed income. That's 49%, at least somewhat more likely to oppose the measure. Voters have passed hundreds of millions of dollars in bonds and parcel taxes. Some of that's the school district. Some of it is the county sales tax, Measure A, that was on the ballot not too long ago. And if the tax weren't going to high salaries, which is of course not true, but it's a typical negative argument, we wouldn't need this measure. That's 38%. Then we go down into the second tier, and I won't read all of those, except to note that five out of the six items that we tested are more than the one-third necessary to defeat a potential bond measure. And that's important to note. It means you have to address these issues if you decide to put a measure on the ballot. In conclusion, TBW and Godby Research, TBW is our partner in this process, think that the citizen priorities suggest that a bond measure could be successful with some qualifications. We really should be focusing at the top of the list of priorities. Fixing streets and repairing potholes are clearly at the top of the priority from the data we had. Purchasing the undeveloped Black Mountain property are the first caveat. The second is the bond measure ranged from a high of 68% to 56%, and that really depended on the projects that were potentially included or the list and how extensive that was, and the cost. And when we looked at the cost, which we haven't talked about today, we found that really it shouldn't exceed $29 per $100,000 assessed valuation. That's a bond measure. That's not a parcel tax. We're not talking about $20 per parcel. We're talking about $29 per $100,000 of assessed valuation. And staff and your financial advisors can tell you what that means and how that's calculated, but that's the way it is presented in the voter handbook and the tax rate statement. So that's why we use that 29, the cost per $100,000. There needs to be a concerted effort, we think, to explain what the Black Mountain property is. Obviously, we had a very long list of things that we wanted to prioritize, and we didn't get into any details for any of them. But if you were to move forward with the next step and Black Mountain was involved, there's, I think, more details that need to be discussed in that context. And then secondly, I think you need to think in terms of, again, if you decide to move this forward, how much time there is between now and the November 15 election, which is not November. For the council, it's actually making a decision probably sometime in July to put a measure on the ballot. So there's not a lot of time between now and the deadline for a November election. Obviously, there's more time for a June election than that. But again, that's the council's decision. So that concludes my presentation for today. Thank you.
All right. I think we have some questions. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everybody, for the presentations. They were all very informative. One question I have, and this is probably directed to Jeff. Given the fact that, as Brian talked about, the non-statistical surveys were people choosing to show up, do you have any sense, just from having been involved in the meetings, about whether there were particular interest groups that were more or less represented than you might have expected?
Yeah. During the public meeting events, we had the opportunity to talk afterwards with a number of residents. And, you know, the two groups that really seemed to make a concerted effort to turn out for those meetings and also share with their group members outside of the forums were the folks that have been looking for dog park improvements in San Carlos and folks related to athletic fields.
Thank you. Second question, Brian, actually, is for you. As I was listening to the presentation, it suddenly struck me at the very end, the, in light of some of the negative statements that resonated well with the community members, given the nature of how the bond cost is assessed, the $29 per $100,000, that will essentially tend to more greatly impact more recent resident, more recent homeowners, okay, because of property prices improving over time. It sounds like you probably didn't test that particular issue, that differential, as a negative or a positive here, but in other similar communities, have you ever looked into that? Does that create a plus? And, you know, seniors may be going, well, it's not going to affect me as much as it does somebody else, or...
We have found that it is helpful. Bond measures, of course, do not have a senior exemption like parcel taxes, school parcel taxes. But they do have a de facto senior benefit or discount, let's say, a de facto benefit, which is right. Seniors who've lived in their house for 30 years have a lower assessed valuation, assuming they haven't made major improvements that have infected it on the tax rolls. And so they do pay much less. And it's difficult in the survey to explain that, but what we've always said for our clients that move on to campaigns, and even during the public information phases before a council makes a decision, that it's important to talk to seniors and make sure they understand that $29 per $100,000, in some cases, could mean they're paying $29, whereas the person who bought the next house next door, it's 10 times that. And that differential is not uncommon on the peninsula. And I haven't seen your specifics here, but it's important to talk about that.
Just a brief follow-up on that, because this next thing I have had some experience with when I was on the school board. Have you ever seen it be a negative from the point of view of the person next door who has the more expensive house?
Yeah. Rarely. Rarely is it, and that's part, well, it seems inequitable. Based on assessed valuation, that's Prop. 13. But what we've also found is that people that buy that house last year have a different disposable income than seniors, they also typically are younger, so they'll have different interests. And the ability to pay is certainly different than a retired person who obviously is on fixed income.
Thank you.
All right. Bob?
I have a question for Rebecca. Rebecca, do we have any ideas, you go $29 times assessed valuation, what that would be?
I'm sorry, Tara. I can actually...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm actually happy to answer that question. That's something, we've hired our financial consultants to run the numbers, which is what they're doing right now. Our very loose estimates at that, this time, is that it is in the $30 to $40 million range.
Exactly what I came up with.
Yeah. Yeah. And so they've got to fine-tune that. One of the complexities, when you look at a bond measure, right, a bond measure is, you know, over the next 30 years, so there's lots of assumptions in it about what your property tax base is going to do over the next three decades. And we have sort of interesting insight into that right now because we're in the process of refinancing our library bonds because interest rates are so favorable. We're going to save the taxpayers some money. And as we've gone through that process, we have the bond that was passed back in the '90s has actually exceeded its revenue projections by about $1.8 million over the life of the bond so far. So in addition to capturing the favorable interest rates on that bond, we're also going to take the excess money raised by the bond and pay the bonds down. Therego, save the taxpayers even more money over the next 10 years. We're going to lower that rate. I think it's on the order of about $20 a year per taxpayer in San Carlos. So those are the calculations that we're trying to have run right now for any new potential bond measure.
Thank you. Mr. Godby, is it unusual for, maybe you've seen this, maybe you haven't, for a group of citizens to get together, like we had the Shape San Carlos, and they go, we want this 80%, 90%, and we're willing to pay for it 80%, let's say. And then your statistical, you know, scientific survey to come in with 56% to 68%? Is that unusual, or...
No, not at all. It's what, in fact, we see, it's typical. And it's the difference between the mobilized constituencies and the rest of the population, who doesn't, in fact, show up at council meetings or at forums. But we go out of our way with the methodology to make sure that all of those segments, and by that, I'm talking about demographic segments, do show up, demographic and geographic as well, so...
The other question I had is statistically, then, if you come up with, let's say, let's just say, a 68% number of the population theoretically would vote for something, and you have a 4% or 5% shift, is there a, so that could go to 63 to 73. So if you look at that and you say, well, we need two-thirds, so then do you offer an opinion, or do you say, well, statistically, you've got a, you know, 5 to 1 chance or something like that, or vice versa?
Ideally, we look to what we call cover the error rate. So that means if we need to get 67%, obviously, it's 66.7, we would like to have 72% on the survey. But with a two-thirds measure, we don't always get that luxury. So there've been plenty of them that have been at 68, or 69, or 70, that have gone forward and onto the ballot and been successful at 68, 69, or 70. We tend to be more cautious on the downside. If it's 64%, it's rare that we're off on the upside. 64% in the survey don't turn into 68%. It just doesn't happen. There's, of course, exceptions to every rule, but generally, we don't like to be in that position. But that doesn't mean that a 64% can't be a measure that just needs some more time and some more outreach and some more discussion in the community to decide what the best package is for the community before putting on the ballot.
And Jeff, is this a 67%? If we go to the, if we go to, okay, 67%. Okay. Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Matt?
Thanks. I had a couple of questions. One is, you know, Bob asked, it seemed, the income part. Do we have an idea, I understand there's an ongoing study, but do we have an idea of, on average, the impact that the, what was it, 30?
29.
29 would have on the, sort of, the average homeowner, the property owner?
We, again, we have a sense. I believe the average assessed value of a home in San Carlos is, you know, between $650,000 and $750,000. So you can just multiply, divide by $100,000 and multiply by 29 to give you some idea. So you're talking about a couple hundred dollars a year on average. Now, of course, there are, you know, over just the last few years, there've been a lot of homes that have really sold for a lot more than that. Over the last 10 years, probably slightly more than that average. Historically, you know, the average is still probably more around the 650, 750.
I had a question then on the mechanics of it. If somebody sells their home and then another person buys it, then that particular bond measure adjusts to that new owner. Is that right? So you get, it goes higher on that piece of property?
And that's why that forward-facing piece that the financial consultants are working on right now takes into account what they think your property tax base will do in the future, how much turnover you have. You know, the age of your population plays a role in that, right? And all those other factors, the growth rates that you've seen in property values in San Carlos, that kind of stuff.
Okay. I had a question for this gentleman, then. Is there, is it fair, I don't know if we're done doing surveys or not, but one of the things that I would be concerned about or wonder about is, you know, we're not doing this in a vacuum. We sort of, I hate to say it this way, but we essentially compete with the school district because they're doing bond measures too. In fact, you know, it's in the papers now that they're talking about re-upping theirs or adjusting, you know, because they have one that's about to expire, do we, you know, so forth. So asking that question, you know, are you in support of San Carlos doing a bond measure? Yes or no? Okay, if the school district does theirs and is successful, what does that do to your opinion about San Carlos?
It certainly does have an impact. And you're correct, the school district has a parcel tax measure renewal on the ballot and not a bond, but they also have a bond measure, and that's one of the reasons we asked that negative question that you saw. I think that our recommendation would be for you to continue this process of figuring out what the priorities are, and then a subsequent survey would narrow down the list. Because we had, arguably, we had a very long list, too long, for a final survey. Not too long for an exploratory survey, but too long for a final survey. And so I think a final survey would have a more specific and targeted list of things you're going to do. It would have a more specific and targeted dollar amount in terms of what's affordable, which we now know from the survey and which you'll know more from your financial analysis. And that survey will be shortly before the council decides to place a measure on the ballot. So if you were heading for November 15, that survey would be done in June. Or if you were heading for June 16, it would be done in February of next year. In either case, it would be after the voters decide. And so part of the information that they would then have is, we just passed a tax for the school district. And so that would be an important thing to do. I think it's a great point.
I just have two more questions. Well, the mayor's gone, I can ask 15 questions now. No, until I get you back.
The vice chair's lost.
No, just two more. So following up on your answer that we probably will be doing some other surveys, one of the things I was looking at when you're presenting all the different things that were asked, it looks like if we could amalgamate some of these projects, like there's Dog Park and there's buying Black Mountain. And in fact, in Black Mountain, there were a couple other things that I saw, like even a community garden, a... a couple of other things that I saw, like even a community garden, a dog park. I mean, you could, you know, put all into one project. So, we as a council and staff could look at some of that, put those together, and then go back out and say, you know, "We're looking at, say, Black Mountain with a dog park, a community garden, et cetera, versus shuttle, versus whatever."
The short answer is yes. The more detailed answer, I think, is based on the, not necessarily, well, based on revenue measure surveys that we've done in other communities, which of course is anecdotal here, and park master planning, my recommendation would be to go talk about Black Mountain, and trails, and hiking, and walking facilities. Because that, in virtually every community, is at the top of the park and recreation list. That's not to say that dog parks don't have a constituency or aren't important, but I'm just saying I would lead with the trails, and the hiking, and the walking paths before I talk about dog parks. And again, I'm a dog owner, and I love dog parks, but that doesn't necessarily translate into what we find in surveys.
And then, the last question I had is more for staff. We had the outreach to Rotary, or maybe better said, Rotary outreach to us. What about the other service clubs?
Moving forward, we'll be happy to meet with them, if we're invited to. Rotary invited us, asked us specifically to come do the presentation. So, you know, with anything like this, we want to do as much outreach as we possibly can. And moving forward, that will be the plan, to take any and all opportunities to go out and talk to members of the public about these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two follow-up questions, sort of triggered by some of the thoughts after Matt was talking to Brian. So these are for you, Brian. One is related to the issue of, I think of it as specificity in the measure language, or the language that you're testing. By the nature of the fact that we were surveying and looking for a lot of different, input on a lot of different potential topics, is it your sense that, since our intention all along was always to sort of try and determine what the focus of the community is, and then zoom in on that, that as we provide more specificity, there's an opportunity for the support level to go up?
I think there is. I think particularly for the Black Mountain, which was one of many different things. And as I said previously, I think that if we were talking about trails and hiking paths, for example, in that area, I think that that could have an impact on that. I think, be if that's true for Black Mountain, it's true for all of the things that we might have. Whether it gets to the 2/3 level or not is another question in my mind, and I don't have an answer for that.
Because my recollection, Matt, actually, was when we talked about this process, going forward with this process, we were actually anticipating doing two passes, both because of the school district issue, and because we knew we were going to be leading with a relatively amorphous set of topics, and that wouldn't make a very good bond measure in and of itself. Second question, Brian, one of the things that I thought, noticed was kind of unusual in my experience at looking at these survey results, is you basically do a before and an after. You test the language, go through a bunch of supporting and opposition statements, and then test the language again. And the support actually dropped in this case. So I'd be curious about what, if any, insights you have on that.
Yeah. After my analysis, I think it dropped because there was such a wide, well, it dropped because there was an impact on the tax rates. And because we had some preliminary financial data, we had a very wide range in tax rates. $29 was the lowest. So what we found in other surveys is, once you narrow that, we're not going to ask just $29 on a subsequent survey, because that wouldn't be good either. There's always what's called a context bias, which means if you ask one amount, people always say no. If you ask two amounts, they say no to the first one, and then they think about the second one. So we'd want to have a range again, but it would be much tighter. And that wouldn't have this big high number that people are saying, "Oh, I can't afford that." And in fact, that high number was $58, so it was twice as much. And obviously, if you do the math, it's more than that. So first, I think the range, the high end of the range was just way too much. And secondly, the range of features, which was so broad as well, and some of, well, all of them, again, have constituencies and have support, it's in, for some people, it's in context of, you know, "How much do I want to pay? Do I want to pay $58 for X, Y, and Z?" And I think that's what had the impact, the negative impact on the second test. So if we reduce the range of the tax rates, and we reduce the number of features to those things that this process suggests are actually going to go forward, or have a better chance of going forward, then I think that we won't have that shift on the second test, and we'll be really more real-world test than we are right now. Again, this is a preliminary effort, not a final effort.
That's interesting. That almost sounds like, I mean, somewhat broadly speaking, again, those are both issues of specificity, both in terms of dollar amount and scope.
Right, right. And I think the specificity part is, if, and I'm using Black Mountain as an example, obviously that's your decision, but if we're talking about Black Mountain as the core of the bond measure, then what does that really mean? Is it just buying Black Mountain, which is really what we've talked about here, and preventing development on open space, or is it trails, and hiking paths, and other facilities that you might be able to put place on that property, or use on that property that exists currently?
Thank you.
Okay, Cameron?
So, one other question for Brian, and this is just sort of picking up on the previous discussion. So, I mean, to me, what I'm struck by is the degree to which Black Mountain jumps to the top in a lot of the different places where we got community feedback. And I think with many of the other items on the list, they're very tangible to people, they can understand what they are very easily. Black Mountain is a private piece of property that is not visible from the street, that most residents have never been to. And so, what I'm wondering is, do you, for most people, I would imagine that this is a conceptual argument, right? It's about protecting a piece of undeveloped land. How do you interpret it? If people get to understand what that piece of property is, if they can see a picture of it, if they can visualize, if it becomes more tangible, if they understand where it is, if they visit it, do you think it's, the support is likely to increase, or is it not going to matter? People are going to vote on this up or down, just on the conceptual basis of whether or not we should be protecting undeveloped land?
I actually think that that fits into the specificity issue that we've been talking about. And while I've mentioned trails, and hiking, and walking paths, I do think specificity in terms of where it is, and what it is, will make a difference. We, because of the internet survey, we have the ability to hear what people say back to us. In phone surveying, that doesn't really happen. But people can reply. And one of the reply, one of the actual questions we got before they completed the survey, from somebody who lived on the west of Alameda, was, "Where's the property?" I mean, they live almost right on top of it, right? And they didn't know where it is. So I think that there are a variety of people that don't know. I think that's representative.
And, you know, I'm looking on the slide where you went down the features of the measure. For Black Mountain, you only had 4.5% people say they weren't sure, which, while that was among the highest, it struck me as, people had a high degree of confidence about a piece of property that they had never probably visited or seen. And is that typical?
That's not an atypical not sure. There's also a 12% no effect. So those slight differences, but you can combine those. Now, all of a sudden, it's, you know, 16 and a half, 17%. And so, those are people that need to have more information. And since we're at 63% in round numbers, you know, that's certainly consequential.
Okay. And then, I just want to make a brief comment, which is, I just really wanted to compliment Jeff and the staff on the entire process. I think, you know, sometimes, or in a lot of cases, politics can be, you know, one interest group competing against another, or, you know, one elected official driving a particular agenda, and other elected officials driving other agendas. And that's all trying to approximate sort of the community will, and what the community wants. And this is, I think, a much better process than that, where we actually go out and ask the community what they want. And we do a lot of different methodologies. So we have, we talk to people in depth, we get a scientific survey, and we have lots of different data points to compare. And it's been a very open and transparent process. It's been an apolitical process. And I think it gets us a better understanding of really, where does the community want to invest in the city? And so, I appreciate all the hard work on this.
All right. Thanks, Cameron. Jeff, did you have something you wanted to tell us?
If the council's done, I was going to make a few conclusionary remarks before we go to the public speakers.
Okay. I had just a couple of questions. Brian, sorry to bring you back up so many times, but you're the popular guy this morning.
No problem.
So, it just struck me that this dog park thing, and I think we've kind of just gone over this, is, I mean, it's so high in one, it's so low in another. Is it, is that peculiar to dog parks, or is it, or is it just a, sort of a, you have a special interest group, and they want X?
You actually have two special interest groups. And the reason I say that is, we did a dog parks survey, exclusively dog parks, for the City of Cupertino Parks Department. And I have never been involved in such a contentious survey in my 30-year career.
People like their dogs.
There are people that love their dogs, and there are people that hate dog parks. And we, this was an intercept survey, where we were intercepting people in parks, to see if they wanted a off-leash dog area in their parks. Was also a mail survey surrounding the parks. And we had people going door-to-door, and intercepting people, when we were intercepting people in the parks, lobbying on both sides for a survey. It was, Mark Twain said, "Waters for drink and whiskeys for fighting over," he just didn't know about dog parks.
Okay, a couple others. You guys have been in business how long?
30 years.
30 years, okay. And how many of these types of surveys do you do in a given year?
We do about 100 surveys a year. We've won over 300 ballot measures totaling approximately $35 billion. And that ranges all over the state. It, of course, also includes the last two successful parcel taxes for the school district and the bond measure here in San Carlos.
Well, since you brought up how many you've won, how many have you lost?
Well, we have won 90% of those that we put on the ballot, so we've lost about 30 over those 30 years. So it's a pretty infrequent situation. We're always happy to talk in great detail about any specifics of one of them, because we spend a lot of time thinking about any one that loses.
Yeah. So do you do some sort of failure analysis when that happens?
There isn't this follow-up survey, but we look at great detail in what happened, and what evidence is available, both political, as well as just the demographics, the turnout, and those sorts of things. So, in the last election, we had 23 wins and one revenue measure lost. That was the Sonoma County Library parcel, sales tax, actually, special sales tax, which required 2/3. We got 63%. Our analysis, in short, was, in that one, that we had a precipitous drop in turnout, as we all know, and our model had turnout being dramatically higher. Our model was a year in advance, so that actually being on the ballot, but, and obviously, the turnout was reflective of the governor's race. In that particular case, we also think that the Board of Supervisors elected not to raise the cap for the sales tax. And they basically said, "Well, if you pass this, library supporters, and then we'll go to the state and raise the cap, because we have other sales tax needs." So that was a pretty conditional and lukewarm sort of, here it's on the ballot. And we think politically that that might have had a damper on the supporters, not necessarily the opponents. So, yeah, we do look at those.
Is it, do land purchase measures tend to do better or worse than other measures, since a lot of our survey results show that, if we're going to vote on anything, it would be buying Black Mountain?
Yeah. It depends on what you're buying it for. For example, measures that focus on purchasing property for a school are challenging. And I'm not quite sure why that is, I just know that's the case. For open space, which we're talking about here, particularly on the peninsula, and in the Bay Area in general, they do pretty well, as long as the economy is doing well. And so, the mid-pen open space district had their measure on the ballot the last cycle, and was successful in their bond measure. The economy is getting better. What we see is purchases of open space and open space concerns are not as great when the economy is bad. So I wouldn't have done that in 2009.
You talked a lot about margin of error. And you said that if you have a 64% positive, that you're probably not going to get 67 or 68 in an election. Did you have a case where you had a lot higher support than the threshold, and then you lost, and it was sort of an unexplainable drop in support? Were you able to point to some, any particular reason for that? Or was it an aberration?
I'm trying, well, there was one that was, that comes to mind, and it was quite a few years ago, in the late 90s, for the Fremont Unified School District. We had a measure that should have got 2/3. That was before Prop 39 passed. And we suggested it be on the ballot, and we got about 10 points below that. What happened is, we had a school board member who was running for Assembly, in the Republican primary, was not ultimately successful, but sent out mail saying, "You can't trust the school board."
And then, last question, this kind of, as a related question Mark asked, and that's this whole process of the educational process in an election. I would assume there's a relationship between a long sort of ramp up, and educating the public on what it is exactly that you're, that they're voting for. The more information you can get out, does that, I mean, do you see that there's a strong correlation there?
I think at the margin, there is. And since we're potentially talking at the margin, Black Mountain in and of itself is about 63%, 64%. So we do need to increase that. And the likely place that would come from is the no effect, and the don't knows, we talked about earlier. I think that that does have an impact. I think that of those, if you can get those people to vote. The other thing that happens is, sometimes those no effects and don't knows don't vote. And then you have to recalculate your base, and that does essentially the same thing. But I think that the information is always worth doing. The other reason to do the information, and we didn't go in great detail into the ballot measure questions here, other than the top line, is that there's always a definitely yes and a probably yes. And you can see this in the school district here, as well as all of our other work. The job of the campaign, which is not your job, right, that's not the city's responsibility, that's an independent campaign committee, is to hold the probably yeses. And that may seem like, wow, you didn't do much, because you got what the poll said in aggregate. But in reality, keeping those probably yeses is an important and challenging task.
All right. Last question I have, and I know Matt wants to ask a question, then, Mark. So if, do you have examples, or can you think of instances where a particular measure failed, and the city came back and did it again within, after some period of time, and it passed? Or do they tend to just say, "Well, you know, we just don't think this is a good idea"? Do they go back to the well again, try it again?
I'm trying to think of one. Again, you know, 30 years and 30 or so defeats is not a big list. And you said for cities. School districts almost always do. They almost always do. And they're, ultimately, they can be successful. And most of them are. And a lot of times, it has to do with turnout ratios, and, you know, are we going from a big election to a small election, or a small election to a big election? I'm trying to think off the top of my head of a city that I had that situation in, and I can't come up with ones. But I think generally, for school districts where it's been more prevalent, the answer is yes, you can keep trying. But when you do it, you have to listen to the voters. And if you have a bond measure for a school bond, and you fail, you need to say why. Is it the project list, or is it the tax rate? I mean, those are the two fundamental things. Or is it some political situation that can be resolved, else why? If it's the tax rate, you have to lower the tax rate. I mean, you have to listen to them. They're saying they couldn't afford it. And if it's the project list, you have to say, "Which of the projects didn't you like?" And you have to take those out of the mix. You have to do something. You just can't put the same thing back on the ballot, because, you know, the definition of insanity, and that's...
It sounds to me like the message to us is, "Get it right the first time."
It's certainly better to do that, yeah.
Okay. Matt?
The question I had was...
The question I had was, the 29, sort of relates to what you were just talking about. That was more a question about tolerance versus what we actually need to, given whatever the project may be?
That's right. I mean, it was based on preliminary estimates from the financial advisors, but it is a tolerance. It is not a, "We need this much money."
Right.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is actually more in the way of observation or suggestion. It occurs to me, particularly since we have a number of folks who have joined the council since the last time the council or the city went forward with something here. At some point in the process, if we do proceed, I think it would be a really good idea to have the city attorney brief us on do's and don'ts and what's allowed. Because some of the questions about communication and outreach, they're very definite, my recollection is very definitely things that we can do, for example, as politically elected officials, but there are things that staff absolutely cannot do. And if we get to that point, it would be worth, I think, having a little background briefer.
I think that's an excellent idea to be part of any process like this.
Okay, Jeff, you had some final comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, for sharing your thoughts and questions with us today. Because Black Mountain and streets and sidewalks, or streets and potholes rather, did so well within the universe of the many issues that we asked the community about how they felt, I wanted to provide just a little bit more information for folks in the audience, as well as folks at home who are watching on TV and will see this rebroadcast. Because one of the questions, particularly in the actual poll that was done that came up quite frequently, was people didn't know where Black Mountain was. The online tool through Shape San Carlos allowed us to provide more information and more context to people who were participating. And certainly the community forums allowed for us to be able to educate on the spot about where it was and those kinds of things. But there's a lot of folks who clearly don't know, and we think that that's, you know, gonna be very important in any educational outreach going forward. So Black Mountain property is located on the Alameda at 800-804-806 and 808 Alameda de Las Pogas. It's 11 and 1/2 acre site. And this next point is, I think, actually very important. There's currently three homes on the property and have been for a long time. But I suspect in the next few years, Black Mountain is gonna change one way or another. The property's been on the market now for a little while. The city certainly has been contacted by developers who are interested in finding out more about the city's land use policies as it would apply to Black Mountain if, if they were to buy it from the current owners. And so if it were to sell for development, you could see 68 single-family homes built up on the Black Mountain property in the future, per the city's current zoning of that particular property. Here's a picture of it. There you can see it in the bottom right-hand corner, the Alameda, which is the entrance to the property down there. There's kind of two driveways that lead up. The road runs up the left side for a little ways of the property, and then through the center. And you can see, maybe you can't quite make out the first house, it's kind of hiding there in the bottom third of the property. The main house there is right in the center, and then the third house is the one with the swimming pool near the top. The other property too, that the city is talking about because it's on the market, is the Rioli property, which is, if you're looking in the top of the map there, that open space in sort of the top left-hand quadrant down to the center of the map, that property is also on the market right now. And if the bond were successful and raised enough money, it might, it might be worth to buy both properties and put them together. It's about a six or seven acre, or actually, I think it's more like a seven or eight acre property. So that's something that we'll be looking at as well. Streets in San Carlos, we've got 86 miles, centerline miles of streets. The pavement condition index is about 60 out of 100, so that's kind of puts us in the average category. To bring that up to say an 86, the pavement management index up to about an 86, which would be well above average for streets on the peninsula, it would cost about $60 million. So to give you an idea, we've already talked a little bit about, you know, where we think a bond measure might land, just in terms of dollar amounts. That would, $60 million would likely be in excess of any bond measure that the city would be looking to go forward with. We fill about 2,000 potholes a year. Potholes aren't particularly expensive. The material isn't particularly expensive to do. It's really more about labor. And so our dedicated maintenance workers are out there filling potholes every day. And we invest about $1.4 million in street resurfacing and repair projects a year in the city. And we get dedicated funding sources through gas tax. And I know that these, this issue has been in the news quite a bit lately because gas prices have been so low for, you know, actually a while now. And with the rise of, you know, more and more alternative-use vehicles, hybrids and electric vehicles, some gas consumption numbers, particularly in our region, have dropped. And so they're generating less gas tax, which means there's less money coming to cities in the state to maintain and improve roads. And there's a lot of, you know, varying discussions in Sacramento about how they might address this moving forward. So there is always a need in the world of street maintenance and repairs in any community. I would say from a qualitative level, the general condition of the streets has typically been perceived by the community to be pretty good in San Carlos. I don't receive, and the staff doesn't receive, a lot of complaints over the course of the year. And I haven't heard from council members, this council or other iterations of the council in the past, about receiving a lot of complaints about the state of the streets. But, you know, there are a lot of streets, they're a big responsibility, they cost a lot of money to maintain. We spend a lot of money maintaining them, and will continue to. If we had more, we can certainly do more. But we just kind of wanted to provide a little extra context for the council and the community as we're talking about that. I was very encouraged with the results, and thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor, for your nice comments earlier. I was very encouraged with the results of all the community outreach we did at every level. We got a lot of participation from the community. We got a lot of positive feedback about the process and the fact that they were glad that they were listening to us and the improving condition of the city. You know, we did some tax measures in the past 10 years to ask the community if they wanted to increase their taxes to pay for existing city services like police and fire that were unsuccessful. And, you know, the message that the community sent was, they felt like they paid enough in taxes for their existing city services, and they wanted us to roll up our sleeves and deal with the financial issues at City Hall. And so that's exactly what we did. And very successfully, in many areas, were able to cut costs significantly and actually increase services to the public at the same time. Over the last five years, I'm happy to report that the city's not only had balanced budgets, but we've had surpluses. And in some years, surpluses that ran into the $3 or $4 million range. And the council and staff have taken that, those surpluses, and we've invested them in reserves within the city and also in increased funding for capital projects. So the ability to take care and maintain our park facilities, new playgrounds, like at Crestview Park, those types of projects are where we've taken that savings and we've invested them, rather than just expanding and adding city employees. We've tried to make investments with that money back into the community and into our reserves and our rainy day funds moving forward. So I've been very pleased, getting 1,200 folks to participate and provide feedback in just a two-month period of time, I think, has been very positive. And I'm hopeful that the council will want to continue to move forward with their, you know, top one or two priorities here, so that we can go out and continue to engage the community for the next couple of months. And then check back in with them with a, with a survey in the June timeframe after the school districts had the opportunity to put their parcel tax renewal on the ballot.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Just a couple of questions for you. So we have, today's meeting, we have another on Wednesday. And then you said you're gonna report back to us in March, I think March 9. And that'll be a result of these meetings and sort of a recap of everything we've done to date? And then what, can you just, a couple sentences, just tell us what, what happens over the next couple of months?
Well, hopefully on March 9, the council will either decide which are the couple of projects that they'd like us to focus on, so that we can go out and do much more specific outreach, rather than talk about a very wide range of projects, talk about a couple of specific projects and get into detail, or even just one specific project and get into detail. Or on the 9th, the council could say, you know, "We've had a great process, we got a lot of feedback from the community, it doesn't look like there's necessarily support today for a bond measure, so we'll just table the whole thing and, and not go forward with a bond measure and, you know, keep the information handy for in the future as a reference point." Either way, you know, whether or not we, you know, go forward with a tax, whether or not a tax measure, a bond measure passes for any of these projects, in my mind, isn't actually all that important. Because this process, unlike other processes in the past, is about what the community wants. And if the message that we're hearing, and we heard this from a lot of people, that San Carlos is a really great community to live in and work in and own a home in, and that they're really happy here. And if they're so happy right now with the way things are that they don't feel like they need to pay for improvements, that's a great outcome. You know, that's a great outcome from my, my perspective, and it says a lot about this community. Just as much as it says, if, you know, if there are things that they want and they're willing to reach into their pocket to pay for them, that's great too. So really, this is a very positive process for the community, and, and I hope that it has the opportunity to do that. And so far, the residents that have participated in the process have really brought a lot of positive energy to, to us about how they feel about their city, and I look forward to that continuing.
Great, all right, thank you. Well, at this point, we are gonna go on to public comment. I believe we have at least two speakers. We have three? All right, there's a third. We're gonna start with Priya Joseph.
Hello. So I hope you guys listened to Brian Godby. I had several questions. I hope you can address some of these in the next session. I want more transparency. What is the goal? It's 28,000 residents times 29. What does that translate to? You know, what are the projects? How much is it costing? Where does the surplus go? So, you know, if you're picking specific projects, you know, the person who wants to pay for the dog park and community garden doesn't necessarily want to pay for, you know, people buying houses. So I don't want that to be snuck in at the last minute. Like the Rioli property, this is the first time I've ever heard of it. So there's a sort of, you know, tendency to do that, so. I know that you guys keep saying that the survey was scientific, but I want to point out that there was nothing online that described, for instance, the Holly Street corridor. Like Black Mountain, there was a description, but not Holly Street corridor. So, you know, there needs to be more. Then somebody mentioned Laura, I forget her last name, she actually reached out to the real estate community. I actually didn't have that in the records request that I made. That was not in the list, which is interesting. So, I mean, I basically need, you know, more transparency. So, you know, you're talking about quantitative, I don't know who, you know, 1,200 out of 28,000, if you think that's a good turnout? You know, that's representative? It can't be representative. It's, you know, less than 4%. So. So, I mean, I, you know, I need more transparency. I hope you will address that in the Wednesday session. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Dimitri Vandelos.
Hi there. I am a little confused by the process. It feels like it's putting the cart before the horse. It feels like the city's searching for reasons to spend our money, but it hasn't identified something with a clear need. And I'm curious why that it's being approached in this manner. I'm also concerned that this is being presented out of a normal council meeting. We have a very light turnout of residents. And as a participant in the forum, I have some feedback about it that I think is important for council to hear. In my opinion, the forums that were, whatever building they were held in, were really designed in a way to not get ideas from the community, it was to present a preset canned set of ideas. And those ideas were so general that they weren't clear as to what, what they really were about. So, so I'm concerned about that. Like, what was the criteria used for determining that these were the 16 projects that residents were screaming for? It, it seems like a fabricated list. Street and road improvements, frankly, are something that should be line item budget issues, not, not something that would require a bond fund. So I find that to be curious. Also, I downloaded the document, it's 600 pages. Only about a quarter of the document is searchable via PDF. So 75% of the pages, it's actually closer to 70-ish, 70-something, are just unsearchable via text because they weren't scanned in properly. So how, how can a person or any council member extract the key takeaways if, if three-quarters of the document isn't something that you can search and actually figure out what's, what's in the responses? And that's for the online ones, it's not for the, the shape ones. So I noticed that. Additionally, the Holly Street improvements were brought up very generically. It's just Holly Street improvements. And I asked Mr. Baltby at the meeting, "You guys just did a bunch of changes to Holly Street, what, what improvements are you referring to?". And he was basically talking about what I would consider a nuclear option of getting rid of homes in the south, south side of the street, widening it. And once that was clear, all of, all the people, at least on my table, and there was a, a person from the planning commission at that table, were kind of taken aback by that. And residents from all, all different communities were saying, "There's no way we'd support something like that." My wife attended on another day, and she mentioned that there was no explanation that this was an option that would actually be taking away people's homes. So one has to be very, very careful about what is being presented and asked, and asked for. You know, if you, if you guys want to go ahead and do that and create a even more divisive thing, it's like, I'm very concerned about that. Also, there were developers in the audience, not residents, people representing development companies, so I don't see how that's community input.
Did you make sure if you could wrap up your question?
Yeah, and that's, and that's basically it. I also noticed that many of my written comments were missing. Not sure why, but they were. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Bonnie McClure?
The, one of the things that I would like more information on, please, before the next meeting, and I think the March meeting, is the additional property that's to the north of Black Mountain. Because I've walked the Black Mountain property, but that's several years ago, so I don't have a real clear picture of how many level spots could be attained there, or how much grading would be required to perhaps have a recreational sports field there, as well as perhaps some trails to the west up the hill more. And so the topography's very important there. And I think that that was alluded to by Cameron, that some people weren't familiar with the property. And I noticed on the, on the overhead projection, that the property you spoke of looked like it was adjacent to a street going up, is that Madera, that, and then that there would be more street footage and access to that property than there is the limited from Alameda and then up on top. I've forgotten the name of that street, but you have to go way up Madera and wind around to get to it. So I think that more information is really think that more information is really needed, topography, and what the potential is for that property, to be fair to all. Because, of course, being a Sierra Clubber, oh, great trails. But we have trails at Big Canyon, and we have trails at Eaton. And I hope someday we'll get the second phase of our GuoLo Park trails maintained and built. The problem is that I don't think it's too fair to say Black Mountain and not have some idea of what the real potential is there. I'm all for investing in properties. And if that second property would make that more usable, then I think that's very important and something we need to really investigate right now if you're actually going to put something on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Yes, Matt?
If I may, just because Bonnie just mentioned it, the streets that she was talking about are off of Madera. It's Vista del Grande and Coronado Avenue.
Okay. We have two more requests to speak. Bob Dayner?
I just have a question. Bob Dayner, 165 Leslie Drive in San Carlos. I was surprised with Jeff mentioning that the Rolary property is not included in this. I'm disappointed in that. My attitude toward the last open space in San Carlos is that once it's gone, it's gone. And then we look at the future of San Carlos, and most of the new development is going to be, how would you say it, like Wheeler Plaza, the Transit Village apartments, condos, whatever you want to call it, without open space, without a backyard like I have. And people are going to have to use these parks. And then we look at a little article and chronicle today about parks in San Francisco that caused me to pause, that there is significantly increased use of parks. And Crestview Park is an example, it's probably double, tripled in its use recently. And my attitude, as a lover of parks, is we can't afford to let this property go. But if somebody could clarify, why can't we get the Rolary property as well as Black Mountain? And, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bob. And Liz Sekler?
Good morning. I'm not feeling 100%, so I'm not as organized mentally as I'd like to be. First off, I attended the Shape San Carlos meetings, and I participated in both surveys. One thought on the San Carlos Shape the Future meetings was every single person at our table came with a completely different agenda and priority. It was an eye-opener for me. But what came out of it was everybody, almost universally at those tables, came back with, we got to save the Black Mountain property. So that was number one, came out. They didn't know what they were going to do with it, but they kind of saw it as an open-ended panacea to solve a lot of problems, which is good news and scary news. Because this gentleman talks about what we all hold dear to our hearts, or at least some people in this room, which is open space, trails, undeveloped land. But we all went through a big fight and contentious debate not six months ago about need for school land, need for dog parks, need for open space, need for trails. So everybody's going to sign up for, let's go get Black Mountain, because once it's gone, it's gone. But everyone's going to have a different picture in their mind. And then when something happens, whoa, then we're going to have big issues. So I think, okay, enough said on that. Haven't heard any mention of, okay, if we acquire it and it's annexed as park space, does that put North Crestview vulnerable again to be a school? And I want to put back on the table that school was looking at Black Mountain property in their district. And if they're moving forward now, it doesn't mean that in three years, they're not going to run out of space again and want more school property. So that should be a consideration if we are considering a bond measure to purchase that property. Is it some land available there, which is more centrally located, more road access for potential school expansion there? Have I used up my two minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Liz. Cameron?
So I just wanted to ask Jeff, because there seem to be a couple of questions about why the Rolary property was not part of the process. Is that a matter of timing that it wasn't on the market at that point? Or can you talk about what the thought was there?
Yeah, it just recently came on the market. And I believe I did mention it at all the meetings, but it was more of an in-passing comment. Because our desire is to get the Rioli property as part of this, too. That's, that would be the prime, that would be the desired outcome. It's just more a matter of cost, right? If you can afford to do both, then we should do both. If you could only afford to do one, then it's Black Mountain. That's at least how we see it at the staff level. But the desire, and we believe that there's a very good chance within that, you know, $20 to $29 bond measure range that we're talking about, that you could acquire both properties and make some basic improvements to them. You know, obviously, there's going to have to be some roadway improvements and bathrooms and, you know, cleanup. And the property's going to have to be made presentable and safe for the use of a public park. I don't see a nexus between North Crestview and Black Mountain in terms of there being any more or less likelihood that Black Mountain, or North Crestview's status as a park would be changed in the future. The process to do that would always be the same. The council would have to vote and the community would have to vote to do that. And I think, at least for the time being, that the school district has invested their money elsewhere now and their plans elsewhere now. So, you know, like you say, they always could come back in three years, but they'd have to first go to the voters and get, pass another big bond to do that, too. So I don't see that on the radar anytime soon.
All right. And Brian, just real briefly, if we had been talking about 18 acres of open space versus 11 acres of open space in the community survey, would you expect that there would be any difference in the result?
I wouldn't expect there to be any difference. I think the driver, as Jeff said, is probably the cost.
Okay. Thanks.
Just add, there was one other comment, too. We've been reaching out to the owners of Black Mountain property and Rioli property so that if the council does choose to continue forward with some outreach, what we would hope to be able to do, and what certainly the owners of Black Mountain have expressed an interest in doing, is themselves in the city jointly hosting some open houses there on several occasions so that the public has the ability to actually, you know, it's one thing to see a picture of it. It's another thing to get topographic information about it. It's a whole different thing to stand on the site with your own two eyes and take it in. And so I think that will be critical in the next couple of months if the council chooses to move forward to plan those and have those events.
All right. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to actually respond in a slightly different way to Cameron's question. I actually have tended to mentally lump the two properties together under the heading Black Mountain, mostly out of sloppiness, most partially out of my initial pre-existing belief. I thought it was all one property at one time. And based on conversations I've had anecdotally with people on the street, those people who are aware of Black Mountain have made the same mistake as well. They tend to view the entire property as being Black Mountain. So it's clearly something we need to clarify going forward. And I guess the only other comment I'll make is, for me, my interest in both the properties is the same. I would love to see us acquire them.
All right. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address us this morning? Just a reminder, we are going to continue this study session Wednesday in this room at 7:00 PM. So if there are no other comments from either the public or the council or staff, Jeff, it looks like we have one more?
Just one more quick one, just to clarify for those folks that hear. The purpose of the meeting on Wednesday is to redo this whole meeting again, so it's the same presentations from the consultants and whatnot. It's just two opportunities for the public to be able to attend and take part. So it's not so much a continuation as just a whole nother opportunity for the public.
Sort of a repeat. All right. Thank you all for coming. We are adjourned.